Renee, you all set?
Okay, we'll give it a try. Yep, so I don't need these. All right, let's go. We'll give it a try.
All right, thank you.
Ready?
This is the Village of Monans Board of Trustees Semi-Monthly Meeting. I am Mayor Meg Grenier, and as it is 6 o'clock, I will call this meeting to order. For anyone outside the village staff who is attending this video conference, I would ask if you would please identify yourselves.
Mike and Susan.
Bill Nevins.
Megan and Rebecca are out there. Not sure who else.
Oh, yes, Rebecca Tenhegan.
Megan Ponton.
Hi, Megan. Okay, I'm going to ask that everyone would please mute their microphones. I'll now do a roll call of the village staff. Deputy Mayor Eileen Nichol.
Present.
Trustee Seth Harris.
Present.
Trustee Brian Marsh.
Present.
Trustee Diane Foley.
Present.
Clerk Don Hanahan.
Present.
Executive Assistant to the Mayor Paul Reese.
Present.
Village Attorney Steve Raphus.
Present.
On behalf of the village board, I would ask all residents that we please keep our first responders, all essential workers, and those affected by this pandemic in our thoughts and prayers. Pursuant to Governor Cuomo's Executive Order Number 202.1 issued on March 13th, 2020, suspending Article 7 of the Public Officers Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by law that allowed the public to not be physically present at the meeting, but allow the public to listen to or view such meetings via teleconference call or video call.
Hello, thank you for calling with wire.
While the court is later transcribing of the meeting, Village of Monans Board of Trustees Semi-Monthly Meeting is being held via Google Meets Video Conference to protect public safety and welfare during this COVID-19 pandemic. In an effort to conduct this meeting effectively, we ask those in attendance to please mute your microphone during the meeting. As we are conducting only essential business during tonight's meeting, there will be no public comment. Any comments previously submitted to the court prior to the meeting and deemed essential will be read into the record. And unless there is another extension by the governor, our next meeting should be in person.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry, guys.
We need a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the July 20th, 2020 Board Meeting.
So moved. This is Diane.
Second, Seth Harris.
All in favor?
Aye. Meg, you amended it with that one change, though, right? Regarding the solar accounts.
Okay. Yeah, it noted all accounts were part of the solar thing, but it's only a portion.
Correct.
Okay, Don, you're going to go through the payments?
Yep. Warrant number five. General $87,716.30. Water, $8,128.83. Sewer, $8,915.99. Totally $104,761.12. Park improvement, $862.50. Payroll number five, $108,409.60.
Second is Brian.
Right, okay.
Sorry, muted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two water bills that need to be corrected. One was due to a faulty water meter. The meter that was put on was the wrong size, so it read the water wrong. And this is for 12 Wolford. They'll need to... $780.50 was based on a wrong meter that was installed. A total of $332.83 is to be deducted from the original bill for a period of November 1st to November... correction, April 30th. A total of $149.76 will be deducted from the sewer from the same period. And 21 Wolford was billed at an amount of $1,400.
Don, hold on a second. Can we do one at a time?
Yep, that's fine.
Brian, so moved.
For 12 Wolford.
Eileen, second. For 12 Wolford.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now, sorry, go to the 21.
21 Wolford was billed for an amount of $1,459.72 based on an input error. A total of $801.26 from the original bill will be deducted for water and $360.55 will be deducted from the sewer.
So moved, Eileen.
Brian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, Diane.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No, you're not opposed. I'm just saying if anybody's opposed.
Abstained.
Yeah, you abstained. It's her house. All right, Paul, you want to give an overview of the MS4 agreement?
Yeah, this is the amount the village pays to the Stormwater Coalition of Oldham County. It's our annual dues. $9,500 for 2021. We need to get this information to the county by August 15th, which is why I asked Donnie to put it on the agenda for tonight. It's the same as last year, and actually going back to 2018, we've been at the same level. What this does is this provides technical services to the village with respect to the different compliance components of the program.
What's the amount? $9,500.
So moved.
Second, Eileen.
You're muted.
I'm muted?
No, me neither. Did I say all in favor?
No.
Aye.
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 Frank was going to talk about Mike Case. I'm going to text him, see where he is, but the fire department wants to make a purchase of three turnout sets of gear for the fire department at a cost of $10,095.21. It's under state contract and it was also...
Okay, and this is in the budget? We're all good with that? We replace, what, three every year?
Every year, we replace three sets at each occasion.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second, this is Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I was texting Frank.
Frank is here now.
No, but I was texting one. Yeah, who? I didn't hear.
Brian.
Brian, and who seconded it?
I did.
It was either... it was probably all three of us seconded it.
Someone thirded it.
And fourth.
Okay. Frank, do you want to talk about Mike Case?
I think Frank is muted. So Frank, you can unmute yourself. There we go.
How's that?
Excellent.
All right. Sorry, I'm a little late. I tried to get into my phone. It wasn't happening, so I had to grab the computer. Mike Case has been with us now for six months as a part-time officer. With the resignation of the other officer, I'd like to bring Mike Case in full-time. He's been here three to four days a week since then. He's very efficient, very good. All the guys get along with him well. We've had some good citizen interaction. The citizens seem to like him. It was mentioned at one of our roundtable meetings even that Mike has good skills. He's nice to people. He gets along well. So what I was looking for tonight is just the okay from the board to bring Mike on to a full-time position in the place of our person that resigned.
Okay, I move to approve Michael Case as a full-time police officer with the Monans Police Department.
Second, this is Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Frank, do you want to?
Thank you. I appreciate it. The other thing I would like to talk to you about is with the governor's new executive law, Number 203, I believe it is, it has to do with revamping policies and procedures. No matter if they work or if they don't work, you have to show some kind of initiative to change them, for lack of a better word, to make them more fitting with the climate of what's going on today. What he said is you have to form, not a board, but you know, a committee basically that has to consist of certain people. One is an ADA, one is a public defender, one is probably a board member, one is a person from the affected part of the community, and possibly the church area. Now, it's kind of a pretty big undertaking because we have to review a lot of the policies and procedures. We have to have meetings on this. We have to go over, have to get at the end when we do come around to agreeing on what we want to do. We have to have a public comment period, and then the board has to okay the results of what we've done. Now, I did talk to the chief of colony. He has three binders done of what he's doing. And the governor made no stipulation about big, small, in-between. A 500-person department or a 12 department has to do the same thing, which is puts a lot of pressure on us because what we've done and what we've amended over at least past couple of years works very well. We do not get citizen complaints for any... Really, we don't have any problems with the minority community as far as complaining about our officers. So, but he said we still have to change things. So I have to go over all the policies and procedures and look at what we have and come up with areas to try to amend. And I'm not really sure how I'm going to do that, but it's going to be a pretty big undertaking to do this. I know that Colony has the actual DA, Dave Soares, and they have the public defender, Judge Herrick, and several other peoples in the community on their board. And I know they have two or three people under him that are working this thing pretty diligently to come up with a plan. The other aspect to this is training. We have to do some bias, anti-bias training, some not medical training, some, you know, mental health training. And there's a few other things that we have to do under the training aspect of this. So this is going to be a while, and the caveat here is if we do not have this done by April 1st and approved and sent to the state, they will hold any grants that we have. We will not issue any new grants to the entire Village of Monans and not just the police department. So that's where we're at with that. I just wanted to give you an overview of that. I had an hour and a half to fight on it the other day with the chief's police conference and Lexipol, which is who we have our policies and procedures through. I'm going to try to talk to the one off, the one Lexipol guy tomorrow. He is a Colony cop at one point. He was the chief up in Scotia. And he's an attorney, Mike Grenali. He worked for Colony PD. He's pretty well-versed on a lot of things. I'm going to try to get some insight as to, you know, what the governor might give in or might try to work with us a little bit. I really don't know. So far, he just put a mandate and executive order that says every police department, I even broached the subject to possibly, you know, doing Water Fleet, Monans, Green Island in one big group. He doesn't believe that the governor is going to allow that to happen. So they're making us basically change something that's working, which is, I think, going to be harder than something that really needs work. They also want you to look at how you assign your men. We have mostly two to three people on the road. We don't have areas that we can reassign people to. You know, we can't... you take the south end, you take the north end. We don't have that ability. So there's a lot of these things that really are, I don't think, pertain to us. We still want to address. So at some point, we're going to have to sit down and come up with a board or a, you know, a group that we can put together. We're going to have to talk about who that is. I have some ideas, but it sounds like maybe a board member will probably be part of that.
I think it's...
So that's something that you can discuss, I guess, amongst the board or whoever, that you want to come up with the person. That's a broad overview right now.
I think it's actually the government... the board is the one that convenes the group, not the police department, if I read it correctly. So...
It is.
Right, so it's... I also have some ideas of people I've thought about, so we can get together and talk about that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yep, it's the board that convenes, but it's coming from within, and that's what John homie from Colony PD. I'm going to meet with him this week. He had a lot of statistics, statistics, and a lot of things that he had already had done for prior things. So he's kind of using that as bolster because you not only have to do these things, you have to say why you change them and what your goal is in changing them. So, you know, we're going to have to work on some of those because, like I said, for the most part, we don't really have those issues in these policies and things we have in place right now work. But, you know, we can, as a group, we can sit down and try to figure that out.
And we've got till April 1st, so we've got some time, but not enough time to let it just go to the wayside.
Right. I'd really like to get it done sooner than later, so it's out of the way.
All right, we'll talk about it.
All right, and Frank, I just wanted to reiterate. I know we've said at some recent meetings, but the board the board is, feels very lucky to have the Monans Police as professional as they are and helpful as they are to our whole community. And we want to thank you for being the orchestra conductor for that group, keeping them as great as they are and being a leader as well as being the point person to the board. And I don't mean to speak for everybody else, but I'm sure whoever decides to join this, whoever joins this will continue to be that supportive and we'll continue to help you in any way that you need.
Thanks, Seth. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's not, just to read it, "Each local government entity which has a police agency must convene the head of the police department and stakeholders in the community to, one, perform a comprehensive review of current police force deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices; and, two, develop a plan to improve such deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices for the purpose of addressing the particular needs of the communities served by such police agency and promote community engagement to foster trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportionate policing of communities of color. Such plan must be adopted by the governing board by April 1st, 2021." And as far as the community engagement, we've started that. We've had three meetings so far, and those are going to continue. We've been limited to the number of people that can be included because of the coronavirus or COVID, but we'll keep moving on that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time as usual. You have a good night.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Brian, you're up for next AMP energy agreement?
Sure. So last time we talked about the community solar program, which will save the village money. The concern was just having Steve look at some of the agreements or the agreement that would over, that would be in place for the majority of our accounts. The exception would be the small, small accounts that basically don't use much power at all. It's not worth putting them in the program. So I forwarded the agreement to Steve Raphus and Meg. And basically, I guess, the concern was the the ability to exit the program. And I believe Steve reviewed it and said, "It's clear. It's 90 days. And for any reason, no reason at all, we can just say that we're leaving, and so be it." So since the farm that we are going to be part of, if we agree to this, is going to be available in the fall. And if we sign this agreement now, basically, we'll be part of that and start saving, stating, saving on our energy usage in the fall, once the solar field becomes available.
Brian, you had corrected the... it was in New York, not in Massachusetts, I think. Did you?
Correct. So it's Lenox, New York, is the solar farm, so it is within New York. And it is not Lenox, Massachusetts. That was my mistake.
Okay. And Steve, did you have any comments on the agreement you've note, you looked at?
No. My primary concern was the ability of the village to get in or out of the agreement. As Brian said, we have a 90-day termination for any reason or no reason, so I'm good.
So we're looking for a motion to...
Yep, so I would move. We, yep, we signed, we signed, we asked Meg to sign the agreements, and we become eligible to start getting our power from the solar farm as soon as it becomes online. And, you know, like I've said before, the savings are $3,000-plus a year for basically doing nothing except subscribing to renewable power.
Second, Eileen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Thanks for doing all the research and checking on that with Steve.
Yeah, I mean, just as, just as a follow-up, this does not preclude us from ever finding something better and moving to whatever that something better is. This just, this just gets us some savings now, which, you know, we need. So, and it's the right thing to do because it's renewable power, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Don, did you have anything else? You're on mute. I think we'd have this down by now.
Just to advise everybody, a few months ago, we received the notice that they're going to be having the marathon again, the Hudson, the Mohawk Hudson River Marathon. It has been canceled. That's all I have.
And anybody else before I go to the interns?
Don, can you just give us an update on the bike path from connecting Broadway to the Riverside?
Yes. The Covert's, or the tunnel is in underneath the the ramp, the ramp going to 787 South. They're going to just start doing, they're doing the backfill now. They're going to be paving it. And they said it should be operation... well, that part will be done by September 3rd or September 6th, one of those two dates, and then we should be all set. Then they just got to do, they're already putting the railings in for the bike path from Broadway to the ramp. They're also going to, then they're going to blacktop the whole thing once they get that done. So it should be mid-September it'll be open.
That'll make for some good fall cycling.
Yep.
Nice, thank you.
It's going to make everybody else happier from the loss because they all want to walk down there.
Yeah. It's a good, it's a good connector.
All right, Seth and/or Brian, you want to introduce what you're doing here?
Sure. So normally, at this point in the meeting, I would give an update on what our interns are doing. But, and as everyone knows, we have, we're fortunate to have four very capable and hard-working interns from Cornell University School of Industrial and Labor Relations. And both groups of interns have been, have been doing a phenomenal job, and I can't do justice to what they've been doing. So I've asked both groups of interns to present to both the board and the community what they've been doing. So why don't we start with Megan and Rebecca, and then we'll go to Wes and Natalie?
Sure, so I can go first. So Rebecca and I, what we've been doing is a lot of like comparative research with different villages and other municipalities throughout the state. So my primary focus throughout this research has been on economic development and also what are other villages doing to fuel local business in their community? So I've spoken with officials in lots of different villages, both ones that are comparable in size to Monans as well as ones that are a bit larger, a bit smaller. And in terms of the specific things that I've been looking into, I've been looking into sustainability, grant funding, how are they doing community engagement with like volunteering or youth recreation, senior programs, and also public works and building. And I'm also looking into the structure of village governments. So is it an independent planning board, independent zoning board, independent village board, or are those things combined with the town? How are they interacting with chambers of commerce, industrial development agencies in the county, things like that? And then on the qualitative or quantitative side of things, I've been doing some data analysis about water and sewer rates as well as housing, so prices, trends over time, and like the number of units that are in housing structures, densities. So yeah, it's been really valuable so far to just kind of see how much of an impact all of this community-based initiatives are having on residents. So looking forward to finishing up the project soon.
Very nice.
Thank you. And I have been doing similar type, a similar type of work, but I've been focusing on shared services between villages and their towns and budget items, especially interest income, and then the fire and historian departments also. So I've spoken with about 25 municipalities on their shared services and what services they share, if they have had any plans to increase that, or what the kind of climate is and what the relationship is between the town and the village. And I have looked through about 40 budget reports to get a sense for how appropriations are being spent and divvied up, looking especially at what, what percent of overall appropriations are going towards the fire department, and then also looking at the way that his, like the Department of the Historian is run. So I am wrapping up and working with some villages that are not as communicative as I found Monans to be, but generally speaking, everyone that we've talked to has been very helpful. So I will be wrapping up my calls in the next two days and then working on different statistical analysis measures and pulling together a report with recommendations on shared services and that interest income and fire and historian departments.
This has been great. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. They, and I, I've been meeting, and I've been meeting weekly with Megan and Rebecca, and they've, all along, they've been this thorough. So I've been thrilled with what I've heard, and what you've heard tonight was a good, good summary of what they've done so far, and still a couple more weeks to go. Trustee Marsh has been meeting weekly and working with Wes and Natalie, who also wanted to talk a little bit about their research.
Yes, this is Brian. So, so, so my team's been focusing a little bit more on some financial analysis, and then we've divvied up a couple different tasks, looking at financial data benchmarks for the, for the different municipalities. We also picked 25, so I'll let each of them tell you what, what they've been focusing on. So Wes, do you want to hit it first?
Yeah, sure. So over the past couple of weeks, we've been putting together like a 10-year financial forecast for Monans' budget based on past data that we have. So we've been making projections of what, for example, if the expenses of our budget go up 3% year-over-year for 10 years, how then do full property assessments need to increase? What proportion do tax rates need to change? And things like that, just to make up for that change in expenses. So basically, over, over the next couple of weeks, a goal for us would be to put together a plan that can lay out how Monans can... lay out how Monans can best position itself based on our assumptions and how the expenses are going to increase and how we would need to change the tax rate and the taxable assessments and how property would need to grow in Monans and things like that, based on how we project the expenses will increase and how, overall, in one sentence, over 10 years, how we can balance the budget and what the outlook for Monans is.
Awesome. Thank you.
So my camera isn't working. I don't know why. I'm trying to start it and it just like fails. So another one of our projects has been to look into other municipalities' financial reportings in the sense of how frequently they update their board, what kind of reports do they give? And I've had good luck with two so far because just how things are, but I'm going to keep trying with a few more. And one told me that, both of them told me to use specific programs for their financial reports. But some of the information I got from one of the mayors was that besides just having these reports, they actually, the frequency is monthly. So every month at one of their two board meetings a month, they will update their board on the current spending of different departments, whether it's on track with their budget versus off track. So I'm hoping to get some examples of those reports from these municipalities and talk to a few more to gather some more information about a good option for Monans so that the board can be updated regularly on our spending or your spending throughout the year. Because that's a really important part of having a budget, knowing that you're actually sticking to it.
All right, thanks, Natalie.
That's great. Thank you for all your hard work, all the interns, and thank you to Brian and Seth. This is, this is pretty cool to have.
It really is. Thank you, Wes and Natalie, and Rebecca and Megan.
Yeah, it's, I can say, it's been fun and interesting to, to look at some of these different things and just, you know, try, try and, and and the forecasting is especially interesting. So we'll get into that when they present their final report, so.
When does everybody go back to school and how are you going back to school?
I'm planning on driving myself because right now my state is on a bad state for New York State. So I'm going to take myself up and then plan on quarantining with my roommate because her state is also in a bad, is also a bad state. So that's my plan.
Are you all going back in person?
I'm moving in the 28th and will be, yeah, in person.
Yeah, I'm heading up in about 10 days or so. I'm going to do a similar thing to Natalie. We just hang out at my, my house with my two roommates and yeah, so you see what happens in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm planning on heading back around the 23rd and just kind of getting a last week of relaxation in before the semester starts on the 2nd.
Well, good luck to all of you and thank you for all this work that you're doing on behalf of the village. We appreciate it.
We sure do. And remember, this is the last time you're going to hear from them. They'll have their reports to our board on the day after Labor Day. So that'll be, I think that'll be fascinating to hear from both, both groups of interns. I, I can't wait.
Good. Sounds good. All right, does anybody have one letter from a resident, Bill Garvey? Wanted to thank our DPW crew for getting the following things done. Removal of bush weed plants from wooden guide rails inside and outside and around both dugouts at Gander Smith Park. Removal of plants, weeds, and brush from most red fire hydrants so far. As always, our DPW crew do an excellent job in performing their duties the best they can. And he is glad to see that the majority of the private homeowners mow their lawns, although there are a few private homes that failed to mow their lawns. And he is requesting the board enact and enforce the village law requiring all private property owners to mow their lawns every seven or eight days, just like it's done in the village of Scotia. So I think that's all I have. Don, you got anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so I think we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, this is Brian.
Second, Eileen.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Both. All right, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yes, everyone enjoy.
Thank you.
Take care.
Looks like you're still recording.
That's why I was trying to get it to shut off.